This time I'd like to call to order the June 8, 2011 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The record show that Commissioners Bob Nance and Susanna Zerazua-Gradyne are absent. All other Commissioners are present. This time we'll take up the approval or denial of the June 8, 2011 Proposed Agenda.
That's the amended, amended agenda.
Well, that's right. The Proposed, amended, amended agenda. I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Milton Cluot, to accept the agenda. Is there any discussion or objection? Motion passes. Item four, approval or denial of the minutes of the April 25, 2011 Special Commission/, Special Planning Commission/Master Plan Subcommittee Meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Milton Cluot.
Second.
Seconded by Dan Sadley to accept the minutes. Is there any objection or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, approval or denial of the minutes of the May 11, 2011 Planning Commission Meeting?
Motion.
I have a motion by Milton Cluot to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Dan Sadley. Is there any objection or discussion? Motion passes. Item six, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on any items on or off the agenda? Please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Public comment period is closed. Item seven, we have a DOTD presentation. This was a request made by our subdivision ordinance committee chairman, Mr. Cluot, to me to invite members of DOTD to come make a presentation. Are those gentlemen here this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Dwight Fox. I'm the statewide traffic impact engineer for DOTD. And...
Sir, please speak into the mic.
Ah. My name's Dwight Fox. I'm the statewide traffic impact engineer for Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. And my job is to enforce or help enforce the traffic impact study policy that was adopted by DOTD in March of 2007. This policy was developed by the Highway Department because we had a dual responsibility to design, operate, and maintain the facilities in a reasonably safe and efficient manner while still understanding the need for people to have access to their property or to the state highway system from their property. And, you know, the key to this whole thing is what is reasonable. Reasonable does not mean unrestricted access. Access to the state highway system may be restricted or controlled in many different ways as long as the access is granted. The traffic impact study policy was developed in an effort to balance these conflicting needs and to ensure that requests for new access were evaluated in a consistent manner by using objective data to facilitate decision-making. Requests for new businesses, subdivisions, apartment complexes, any addition to any of these, or any development that will create new traffic exceeding the traffic impact threshold, which has typically been established at 100 peak hour trips, is subject to this policy. Such a development must be within a quarter of a mile on a state highway route or on the state highway itself. If it's beyond the one-quarter mile limit, then we have no jurisdiction over it. However, we still maintain jurisdiction where the roadway intersects the state highway The other key is whether or not the section of the state highway is considered to be congested, which typically means that it has a level of service of D or lower when measured with the methods in the Highway Capacity Manual. Where does the new policy apply? We've just gone over that. Where does it not apply? It doesn't apply to access to any interstate, freeway, expressway, or any other controlled access facility. And it's not for individuals requesting single-family residential access. Up to five individual residences on a single shared access road or servitude may be considered. Basically, the review process starts with a pre-application meeting. As soon as the developer or the applicant becomes aware that they need access to the state highway system or within that one-quarter mile limit, then they should contact the district traffic operations engineer in the district in which they're located to arrange a pre-application meeting. The DOTD, DOTE will go over the available information and determine if a pre-application meeting is needed. If so, he will establish a time and date and a location for that meeting. If it is determined that a traffic impact study is needed as a result of the pre-application meeting, then the district office will supply roadway classification, access management classification, and traffic counts, including truck percentages if available. Otherwise, if they are not available, then the applicant is responsible for collecting them. They have to reach certain terms involved in the preparation of the traffic impact statement. Doesn't quite go down far enough. Some of these things that they have to talk about are trip generation, trip distribution, area of influence, whether or not certain types of adjustments referred to as bypass, internal, or diverted link adjustments will be allowed to the trip generation figures. Most of those adjustments, if they are allowed, reduces the amount of new traffic that the development generates. The traffic impact study is submitted with recommendations for infrastructure or traffic control improvements to offset the expected impacts from the new traffic generated. Independent review by the district traffic operations engineer or a joint review with the district and the headquarters traffic impact engineer follows the submission of the traffic impact statement, study. When it is only reviewed by the district traffic operations engineer, he will review it and either approve or deny it and send a letter with a copy of the cover sheet from the traffic impact study and a list of conditions required for approval in a letter of compliance to the developer. If the developer agrees to the conditions, then some agreed-on method of acknowledgement is submitted to the district traffic operations engineer, and then the developer can begin the access connection policy procedure, which is different than the traffic impact study policy. If it's a joint review between the district and headquarters, then the approval or denial recommendation is made jointly, and a letter once again is sent to the applicant with a list of conditions that are required in order for them to have access to the state highway. If the developer agrees, then he has to acknowledge it in some manner to the district traffic operations engineer, and then again he can begin the access connection policy. There is a written appeal process to the Traffic Impact Review Committee. If necessary, it must begin within 30 days after the applicant is notified if, of the denial of his traffic impact study, or if he does not agree with the conditions that are contained in the letter of compliance, then he can appeal those to the Traffic Impact Review Committee. There are two additional levels of appeal, to the Deputy Secretary and the Secretary of DOTD. Those two levels of appeal consist of just reviewing the material that has already been submitted. No new testimony is allowed at that level of appeal. The traffic impact study has to be prepared by a qualified licensed traffic engineer with active status or by a person under the responsible charge of a licensed engineer. It has to include the following: an executive summary, a table of contents, tents, an introduction, traffic information, including clear statement of any assumptions, existing and future traffic conditions for the AM and PM peak hours or as determined by the department, conclusions and recommendations for the required infrastructure improvements or traffic control improvements, a rough cost estimate of making those improvements. The latest version of the Highway Capacity Manual is used to compare the roadway and intersection capacities before and after the development generates the new traffic. If improvements are recommended that will reduce delay, then they must be constructed at the developer's expense. The policy has been in effect since March of 2007. It hasn't worked as well as we've wanted it to. Individuals both in and out of DOTD are not happy with the process. It has enjoyed some success in the larger, more populated parishes. A series of meetings were held during the spring and summer of 2010 to identify the problems and concerns of all of the individuals and groups that were involved. Many of the same complaints were received as follows. They interviewed as interference from headquarters, inconsistent application in different districts, process takes too long to complete, little input or support from local governments. Where do we go from here? The traffic impact study policy is currently being rewritten and planned for new release, hopefully before the end of this year. Both the current procedure and possibly a system of traffic impact fees to be paid in lieu of doing infrastructure improvements may be included for larger developments. It's believed that these changes will provide a more acceptable procedure for all of the stakeholders involved. This is a copy of the Louisiana Register Title 70, which is the state law that implemented the traffic impact study policy. And it is a state law. It's not just a DOTD policy. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cluot.
Mr. Fox, thank you for coming. Appreciate your input. As you know, Ascension Parish is fixing to go through a master plan, and I feel that in this master plan should have a master road plan, because that affects this parish quite a bit. Would the state be willing to work with this parish, with the parish roads, and possibly with some of the, obviously with the state roads, but possibly some of the parish roads? And how would we go about contacting the person that would be, that we could find out some information to where the parish roads, the state roads intersect with each other to come up with that master plan? I believe that your primary contact in that case, and I cannot speak for either of the two individuals, would be the district engineering administrator, Mr. Roy Schmidt, or the district traffic operations engineer, Mr. Bert Moore. And I think either one of them could assist you in answering those questions, which I can't. What, in your opinion, the conditions of the state roads in this parish does, and you may not know the answer to this either, but what do you feel like the state has as an outlook for the state roads in this parish? That's once, again, a little bit outside of my area. I believe there's another staff member here that can, you know, perhaps address some of the ongoing and upcoming construction in Ascension Parish, which I am not completely familiar with. Of course, there's constantly being published a list of new projects that are being undertaken and being planned and when those are planned. And I think that, you know, either one of the individuals I mentioned could help you get a copy of the portion that applies to Ascension Parish. We're at the point now where we feel like we're going to try to address some form of rewriting or readjusting our traffic impact study qualifications. What model you think would be good? Would the state be a good model to follow, to give us some kind of ideas and directions to start? We have a list that was developed back in 2008 of the typical items that should be included in a traffic impact study, and I'm sure that those could be made available to you. It's not widely used anymore because people have gone, you know, gone either on their own or developed their own outline for a traffic impact study. But all of the information that's in it is current. We are currently writing a traffic impact study guide that hopefully once again will be published before the end of the year, which will much more clearly lay out how we believe a traffic impact study should be conducted. I believe all of the consultants that, you know, primarily work in Ascension Parish are familiar with the process that we use, and they either use something similar to it or a process that they've developed on their own to conduct traffic impact studies. I think, you know, probably the most important thing is to make sure that you agree before the study is done, you know? This is what we kind of expect to come out of it, you know? Don't put the engineer in the, you know, in the position of he spent thousands of dollars of his client's money producing a 200-page report, and the first thing that you do when you open it and you look at it and say, "Well, we didn't agree to that." And it, you know, destroys the entire study. Well, right, you know, you've got a fight on your hands, because the client doesn't want him to do that all over again. And he's certainly not going to do that work all over again for no cost. So it's very important to agree upfront what you expect in a traffic impact study, what they have to submit, and what they can probably expect is going to be the outcome, you know, of that review. My last question. How do you feel about traffic impact fees? I have mixed emotions. It has worked well, as far as I can tell, in East Baton Rouge Parish, where they implemented it a few years ago. St. Tammany Parish has had impact fees for larger developments for a number of years. And they do an awful lot of roadway construction in St. Tammany Parish as a result of the money that they collect from those fees. So it's, you know, it's good and it's bad. From the developer's standpoint, it allows him to know upfront, you know, based on my development, I'm going to have to spend X dollars. Just like he knows with his drainage impact study, you know, I'm going to have to spend X dollars to fix the drainage or to fix the sewage. Well, now he knows upfront, he's got to spend X dollars to address his traffic impacts, and then he's done with it. Then it's up to the local government to take that money and use it appropriately to address those impacts. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Mr. Dumas, I think you had a question.
I was going to follow along the lights you mentioned earlier, the traffic impact In order to have a successful plan for impact fees, you'd have to first identify level of services that need to be maintained for the roads so that you can properly gauge the impact.
Yeah, there's a whole process that has to be gone through. There are a number of consulting firms that do it. It's a very involved process because you have to look at the cost of building, the cost of maintaining. There are just a whole number of factors that, you know, have to be looked into. We had one done for the state, and I believe that you had an initial, one was prepared initially for Ascension Parish, and then they never went forward with it.
Correct.
And I think, you know, in that, it better explains the process that has to be gone through or to arrive at some kind of either a charge per trip or a charge per square foot for a traffic impact fee.
Right. I noticed when you were talking earlier in your presentation, you know, reasonable access, and you mentioned that it was 100 peak hour trips or a quarter mile from a state highway, or if it was congested on a severalth level of D. But doesn't the state also maintain minimum cross-sections of roads that are deemed this is what's minimum safety for a cross-section of a road? What if a road doesn't meet those safety standards? How does that affect the level of service and your decision whether or not a traffic impact statement is required?
Well, of course, if we have allowed a local road to tie to the state highway system, then it meets our, you know, at least, you know, for the portion that's within state right-of-way, we will make it meet our design criteria.
I'm not talking about local roads. I'm talking about a state highway that doesn't meet that criteria, an existing state highway.
Well, you know, there are, you know, probably a number of them that do not, and we're constantly in the process of trying to improve those. Certainly, it affects the level of service on a roadway if it doesn't meet current design standards, and that could have a negative impact on our decision to allow additional access. However, we will not deny access. In some manner, shape, or form, you know, people are entitled to access to their property, and we're not going to deny that. We're going to find some way to give them access. It may not be the access they want. It may not be at the location where they want it, but we will provide access to their property.
Okay. That's it. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to thank you for coming and addressing us. I just want to point a clarity. You're greater than 100 peak hour trips, say like for a new subdivision. Is that relative to combined AM and PM peak hour or just singular AM?
No, it's 100 peak hour trips in either the AM or the PM, whichever is higher. So in the morning, if you had 80, you know, it wouldn't. But if in the PM you had 150, then yes, it would, and you would be required to do a traffic impact study.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I've got one, just a point of clarification for myself. Title 70 is the state law that allows for the traffic impact analysis? If I understand what you told me correctly?
Do what? I'm sorry?
Title 70. That is the state law that allows for...
Yeah, Title 70.
Is that what's being revised right now? Are there, I mean, are there revisions being made to that?
No, right now, the revisions are to our policy.
Okay.
Now, that will have to be, you know, reviewed by the administration to determine if Title 70 needs to be revised or whether it doesn't, and we can implement the things that we're proposing to change under the existing title. And I don't know the answer to that question.
I was just trying to, I just wanted to make sure I understood what it was you were talking about.
Were there any other comments or questions from Commissioner? Mr. Fox, we certainly do appreciate you coming.
I think he has something else later on. I think he has something later on.
This is the end of his presentation. That's what I... We appreciate you spending your time making your presentation to us. Thank you, sir.
I'll get to what he had to say.
All right, moving along. See, item eight on the Agenda Public Hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions: 8A, the Early and Gomez property, lots EG-1, EG-2, and 2A.
Representing the Gomez family on the following family partition, asking the Commission for approval. This plat was brought up probably at the beginning of the year. We missed the deadline of the 90 days, so we're asking for reapproval.
Comments or questions from Commissioners at this time? If not, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on this item, please sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to address the Commission. No one wishing to address the Commission? The public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrow.
This is a question for our staff, I guess. Has items number one and two been approved since we got our packets here? I mean, have they been done or...
Items number one and two are just kind, were just comments that had to be addressed on the plat. We haven't received an updated plat, but typically these are simple, just correct wording corrections, so...
I would like to just make a motion to approve based on comments one and two being addressed.
Second?
I second that motion.
I have a motion to approve contingent upon staff comments being addressed by Steve Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas. If there's no discussion at this time, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Cluot?
Yes.
Mr. Sadley?
Yes.
Mr. Estenard?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 8B, the Terry P. Lesch property, lots E-1 and E-2.
Representing the Lesch family on the following family partition, asking the Commission for approval.
Comments or questions from Commissioners? No comments or questions, then we'll open this up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on this item, please sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to address the Commission? The public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrow.
Guess another follow-up here. Looks like we have an update in regards to the hardship letter. So does that satisfy staff in regards to that part of it?
Yes, the two things that were submitted were, it's a fight for the two comments.
Okay. But what about the, is, are we still looking for...
Servitude alignment.
The servitude? Are you saying that both of the hardships have been provided?
Yeah, both hardships had, the two main concerns that staff had were, was that no hardship letter had been submitted, and for either the family petition or the variance being requested, and those have been submitted at this point. The other one was just a comment from staff. It doesn't...
Mr. Chair, what about item number three? Is utilities servitude been addressed or not?
Yes.
Okay.
It should be on that updated plat, too.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cluot.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve with a variance on the T-turnaround.
I have a motion to approve the family partition with a variance on the T-turnaround by Milton Cluot.
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Discussion. There's no discussion at this time, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Cluot?
Yes.
Mr. Sadley?
Yes.
Mr. Estenard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Item 8C, the Stanley J. Lamedola property tracks A-1-A, A-1-B, A-1-C, and A-1-D.
Good evening, Clint Quinton representing WJ Quinton Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval of the Stanley J. Lamedola family partition.
Comments or questions from commissioners? There's no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. There's no one wishing to address the commission on this item, so the public comment period is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners? There's no comments or questions from commissioners, what's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrow.
Question in regards to the T-turnaround, and maybe staff could explain the comment in regards to that as far as the new route that you're talking about here.
Because it was a hardship request, and their, staff feels that since it's a new, it is a new servitude that's going in place there, that a T-turnaround should be required and, as per the ordinance, and the hardship letter did not suffice to what we felt was a hardship.
Well, and clearly, there's ample real estate to do the T-turnaround with. It's not like it's gonna impose a hardship on the owner.
If I can comment on that, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, there's actually ample room to further extend the, and to create another half-acre lot there. Although I naturally don't believe in T-turnarounds to begin to get-go, but nevertheless, there is ample room to further extend that and to create another, another lot for our kid or our grandkid.
And at that time, when you redo that, you can, you can move the T-turnaround, so it wouldn't be a problem.
You want a client to build a T-turnaround, and then 10 years later, to remove it and move it?
You can put it up further if you like. Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna ask for the variance.
I visit the property, and the end of the property, where it looks like he's going, what he's petitioned for, isn't that his private driveway at the end of the, end of the road?
Correct.
In other words, that's his private search and passage, and then, when I visit it, it looks like he has adequate room to where if anybody needed to turn around, they can turn around without tying up a T-turnaround.
Absolutely.
Do you have any further comments, Mr. Cluot?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dumas, you have...
I just wanna respond that, you know, that's all, that's all fine and dandy so long as these lots remain in the ownership that they're intended to be as the family partition, but this doesn't preempt the transfer title in the future. And the fact of the matter is, is that someone in the future may not be able to go onto that private property to make a turnaround, so the purpose of creating that object is to ensure that whoever owns these other three lots, or somebody else who has no business going onto that property, has a servitude of passage that they can turn around in, such as the postmaster or whoever, that may not be able to get off the driveway and break ground. So, it's more a physical need than it is a, a, an unrecognizable need. And I think that in a situation like this, where there's ample, ample space to create it, there's no reason, or there's no basis to, or rational nexus to justify the variance. And that's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cluot.
If we, if we, for, if we don't grant a variance for the T-turnaround, I see no purpose of it serving, of us requiring him to have a T-turnaround at the end of the driveway. I, and that's his private driveway, he goes in, and I can appreciate the fact that if he sold the property to someone else, that he wouldn't possibly need a T-turnaround, but at this point in time, I, I see no need for a T-turnaround, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would only add that I viewed the property myself, and there's more than, it's really not addition, but just to concur with Commissioner Cluot, there's more than ample room to turn around, and I do also believe that in event of the sale outside of the family, that could be addressed at a later date. I see no reason not to grant that variance.
I have one more, one more comment about number four. I can't, I'm unable to ask for a variance for number four because it's not in the regulations.
In other words, you're saying the renaming, renaming of the, of the tracks as, as lots?
It's nowhere in the regulations, that is correct. So, I can't ask for a variance on number four, although I guess I would like to, but it's not in the regs, so I have nothing to quote.
Mr. Compton, would you care to elaborate on that, any?
It's just our position that when a tract of land that we consider to be a parent tract gets subdivided, that it creates this level for us to continue to follow that a tract has been divided, and when we divide a tract, we'd like to rename those divided parcels into lots. That's it. It's not based on a piece of code, but we see it all the time where these parent tracts are tract A1, B, C, D, Q, whatever, and we just wanna basically say, when a tract is divided, we wanna then call them lots.
Mr. Cluot.
The only problem with that is it causes a hardship in renaming if everything is lots. If you have a tract A next to a lot A, and then that can be confusing on several levels with the clerk of court and in title research. And so, it was tract A before, and although this has been a continual thing that in surveying, I've never seen an absence from, from going to tracks and lots, obviously, when you go into doing subdivisions or major subdivisions, they call them lots, but tract A1 before, and tract A1-A through A1-D, and in certain situations, when you have lot A or tract A next to each other, it, it can be confusing on, on the same side of the road, right next to each other, especially confusing on which, which lot A would you be talking about if two lot As were right next, whereas one was tract A and one was lot A, it would be easy to decipher the difference.
Mr. Cluot.
Would, would you only have any problems with changing from tracks to lots?
No, I'm sure he wouldn't.
I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying, and, and he understands that lot or tract, whichever it may be, A-1-D will change his address?
Yeah, and that's for 911 purposes. That's the first time I've seen the comment, but I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It's usually done.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dalton.
While I understand staff's position, and I think I see where they're trying to go with this, I would like to see if they wanna start using the word lots at a certain level, that we tie that to a specific size of a piece of land. In other words, arbitrarily speaking, anything one acre or greater can be called a tract, anything less than one acre should arbitrarily be called a lot, or something of that nature. And I think that would help if we had some sort of standard to implement this name difference, which is really just a naming convention, but I think it should be tied to some sort of published size level so that everyone understands it. Otherwise, I can see how this could just be arbitrarily implemented in a willy-nilly fashion. And so, while I'm not against requesting it being called a lot, I think we need to formalize this a little more so that it serves a useful purpose that is clarified for everyone to understand. Just a comment about that.
I think that's a great suggestion. Anything over an acre would be, I would be okay with that.
Okay. Maybe that's something that our subdivision ordinance committee can take up.
I see, about putting it on the agenda.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Comments or questions from commissioners, any others?
I'd like to make a motion, approval of subdivision subject to staff recommendations and compliance with items number three and four of the, of the review comments.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any, well, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Cluot.
What is, clarify your motion for me, Mr. Dumas?
I'm basically recommending staff recommendations, approval of subdivision, denying the variance to section 1740-40C and section, approving the variance to section 17-40-26A and requirement of the T-turnaround being in place, as well as addressing items number three and four of the staff comments.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, I would like to make amendment that we grant him...
Substitute motion.
A substitute motion of variance to number one, and grant him the variance for number one, and also grant him the variance for number two, the T-turnaround, and that the owner, number three, the owner rename his address to Leaning Oak Lane, and following the recommendation of staff for number four, please rename all tracks as lots. I don't know the validity of us trying to make him do that or not, but that would be my substitute motion.
I have a substitute motion to approve with condition by Milton Cluot. Is there a second on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, could you clarify the substitute motion? I guess I'm basically asking you to call a question. What does the motion currently read, in its exact form?
Would you state your motion again, Mr. Cluot?
Okay, my motion is, number one, he's, it requires a 40-foot servitude, private servitude of passage, access pass, and he's asking for a variance. My motion is granting him that variance. Number two, is a T-turnaround, he's asking for a variance, I'm granting that variance. And number three, that he changes his address from the present address he has now to Leaning Oak Lane, and number four, rename the tracks to lots.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would second that motion.
All right. I have a substitute motion to approve with condition by Milton Cluot, seconded by Dan Sadley. Is there any further discussion? So, we're gonna vote on the substitute motion first, then?
Substitute motion, I vote no.
All right.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 And the chairman votes yes. So, motion passed.
Thank you.
That's what I wanted to hear. Item 8D, the Leroy J. Mir property, tracks X-1-A and X-1-B.
Asking for planning commission approval for the Leroy J. Mir family partition, giving this to his grandson.
Comments or questions from commissioners at this time? Not, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and we'll get you three minutes to speak. There's no one wishing to address the commission on this item, so the public comment period is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners? There's no comments or questions, what's the wish of the commission?
I have one for the survey. Clint?
Yes.
Would you explain, we just received this this afternoon, would you explain what you added to when you said a 40-foot, a 30-foot turnaround?
Yes, that was a recommendation from the planning department, and my client requested me to add that to the plat, so I did so. It was in a second round of comments that we received before the meeting, and so it's not on the original plat that you had before. And so, adding that important item, and I thought it would be justified to make copies and give those out.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrow.
So, is the applicant then willing to provide a T-turnaround?
Yes, that's what it's, that's what that is.
Okay, so you're not requesting a variance?
I'm requesting a variance on the size and shape.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalton.
Did I understand you crack and say there's a second set of comments that you received?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have that? I only have one set of staff comments.
Normally, what used to happen was, we would get our set of comments, and then they would just end up in the packet from what other comments. So, in order to help us better, I guess, address those, Jeff is good enough to submit a second, I guess, set of comments for us in order to prepare us for, I guess, what's gonna end up ultimately in the packet, that they either missed or adjusted their view on the previous set of comments. And I'm, I mean, I'm for it because it helps us know what's gonna come up at the meeting.
Well, I'm even more confused now than before we started, so maybe staff could clarify this for me.
Mr. Lewenberger. I mean, the way the process works, we do send out a first round of comments, just kind of giving our view on, on what we see and what needs to be corrected prior, what needs to be corrected according to the ordinance prior to the meeting, to make sure everything is in compliance with the ordinance. Now, I'm not, I'm not really sure, 'cause in our first round, we did send out the comment about the T-turnaround, and typically, after we'll receive a plat back from them, some, hopefully resolving a lot of those issues that we had sent back out to for those comments. And as a courtesy, I do a follow-up and just, and just submit, like, these were the comments that, that weren't addressed, and, and because of that, we'll, we'll be recommending this at the meeting. And I just see that as a courtesy follow-up from, from the recent middle of the comments. So, so the second set of comments is really comments that weren't addressed from the originals, the first set?
And those are included in our packet?
That's the letter that...
The second page.
That's the letter that's included on the second page of your packet, yes.
Mr. Chairman. Clint?
Yes.
The owner requests the T-turnaround?
Yes, he did.
Okay, so in other words, he's not asking for a variance?
He's only asking for the variance on the size and shape. He plans on using that as a driveway for X5 and X6 anyway.
The servitude of passage goes in lot X-1-B, does it go that far inside that, that lot?
It does, because we needed to provide adequate frontage for X6, and that's the reason it does that.
Okay. You go back, Mr. Dalton, did you, are you clear now as far as...
I am now, but it was just a little difficult to ascertain that page two was the second set of comments. I've got it now, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, so are we saying that planning comments two, three, four, and five have been addressed? Before we entertain a motion here, I understand one on the T-turnaround, and Mr. Quinton is asking now for a variance on size and shape. I'm still a little bit foggy on two, three, four, and five. And of course, four is this issue again that we just heard on tracks being relabeled to
I'd, I'd say that those comments haven't been addressed.
Okay.
Those are...
Unless there's further comments.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners, then? What's the wish of the commission?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
I would make a motion that we approve this family petition, and that we grant the variance on the size and shape that Mr. Quinton was asking for and... the variance on the size and shape that Mr. Quinton was asking for in behalf of the applicant on the T turnaround, and then we condition it upon items two, three, four, and five with the staff comments being addressed.
I second that motion.
Item two says a T turnaround is required at the end.
Two I'm looking at says a pre-dial servitude agreement is suggested in lieu of effective copying or signing the plat, and that's what I was referring to in my motion.
Said you're looking.
Yeah, so which?
Okay, okay. And?
What next one?
Second page. Flip the page out.
Oh, okay, the numbering's different there, so.
No, yeah, I got, I got it now.
So now it's three, four, five, and six, but I, my motion would include granting the size and shape variance that's being sought to the T turnaround.
All right, so you're making a motion to approve?
Correct.
Approve the proposed family partition, approve the variance on the size and shape of the T turnaround?
Correct.
And, but conditioning the approval on comments, uh, three, four, five, and six?
That's correct.
Being addressed.
That's correct.
Cluot, you seconded that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion?
I just wanna make sure that we're talking about the comments dated May sixteenth, two thousand and eleven? To be more specific? Yes. May sixteenth. Go ahead and answer this question.
Yes.
Trying to be clear.
Okay. There's no discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Cluot?
Yes.
Mr. Saddle?
Yes.
Mr. Essnar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item nine, public hearing to approve or deny the following preliminary subdivision plat, East Creek Shadows.
I'm Bart Wagusback with Germany Land Development, and this is Jared Arthur with Monroe and Corey, and we're here to seek approval of the preliminary plat of East Creek Shadows.
Comments or questions from commissioners at this time?
Yeah.
Mr. Essnar?
I have a, a comment, a question about the bridge, and I think that is the only bridge between, what is that, Highway nine twenty-nine? And whatever, it traverses into down at the Southern Point, or actually, I think it ends back up to the west where it crosses forty-four. But that's the only little bridge within that whole reach. And my question is, why is that bridge there? And if there is no reason for it being there, is it gonna be removed?
The previous owner had the bridge there. I'm not sure what the purpose was, but I don't think we would have a problem removing that bridge when we're there, starting construction. We'd have the equipment to do that, and that wouldn't be a problem. We'd agree to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cluot?
I notice in your mail-out notice, you sent the notification to, looked like would be the, the home, the contractor or the developer. I visited the site, and I noticed that there were a large number of residents that are there, were those residents notified, and not the builder. In other words?
I'm not sure.
Right here, on your thing you turn in, you're showing that you notified the builder. This one shows that we have a lot of residential people living in the homes that are existing along the development, were those people notified?
My partner, Ross, he's not here right now, and he got that group together for the engineers to turn in. I know Willie and Willie are the developers in that subdivision, and I, I'm not sure which of those houses are spec houses, or which ones are sold. You know, I, I can't answer that directly.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Saddle?
Could I, could I make a, an observation or comment about that? I too visited the property, and when you look at, I think it's called the East Creek subdivision?
Villas.
Villas, okay, East Creek Villas. You, you have lots numbering from nine all the way to, look at the plat now, twenty. And when you look at each of these lots that abut, you know, the development here we're talking about on Tanya Drive?
Okay.
You can see, when you talk about maybe not being sold, clear evidence that the vast majority, except for two houses under construction that were in timbers, folks have already moved in. You can see boats in the backyard, you know, vehicles in the driveway. You can see how people have personalized
Right.
their lawn, how they have put in, you know, stuff on their mailbox indicative of someone living here and so forth. So, again, I'd have to concur with Commissioner Cluot. My concern is also that the form that we have in our packet that talks about adjacent property owners having been notified, all I see in the two pages is Legend Homes, Willie and Willie Contractors, Legend Homes, Legend Homes, Legend Homes, and the, and the second page goes on for like eight to ten times, so forth, and I only see two individuals, period. I find it just difficult to believe that all the adjacent property owners have been notified at this point.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dumas?
Staff? Great, Mr. Compton? You know, there, you're requiring them to go get their names from, basically from the tax records, correct?
That's why I was saying, yes.
All right, so, you know, if, if they go to the tax assessor's office and they pull the records on those properties, it may be some time from the time a property sold to the time the records were updated to reflect the current property owner. So, you know, unfortunately, that is the resource for the information that's required by code. You know, and, and that's what they're required to do. I don't see how they can, they can go out and get those, those names any other way.
Right, our, our data's only updated once a year from the assessor's office.
So it could be as much as a year off?
Yes, sir.
Do you know when, what part of the year is, it's, you know?
I think it's October, I think.
Okay. So right now, it's, it's, it's at least seven, eight months old?
That would be my guess.
More or less. But that's what, that's where they get their information. That's the only place they get their information. That's what the code requires them to do. So it's never gonna be exact.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I understand, and I, and I would agree, it's not gonna be exact what Mr. Dumas said, but again, I'm still concerned about it because, and correct me if I'm wrong, do we have to have an approval, this is a preliminary, today, or denial and not getting into the sixty-day issue and all that stuff, we could still postpone and maybe get that noticing a little bit better than it is. Is that correct? Do we need to ask that to staff, or?
Yes, that is correct. If, if we get a permission from the applicant to postpone the thirty days, we, we can do that now. But of course, at the same time, what Mr. Dumas says is correct also, and those records are updated, they're updated once a year, and that's what they're going by, there's a chance they're, they're gonna be missed. Now, I guess, if, if, if we have some residents here tonight that are living in that development, and were not noticed during the public, you know, we still have to open up the public comment period on this thing.
Right, I think that's very important.
And we haven't even gotten to that stage yet. So I, I, I don't think we need to just, you know, at this point, I think it's a little premature to start talking about even potentially postponing. We're just trying to go through and, commissioners have questions, they're trying to get some clarification on some issues right now, and I, I think let's, let's go ahead and get that clarification, then we can open up the public comment period and go from, at that point, then we can start looking at all this other stuff, so.
I, I agree.
Mr. Dalton, you had a comment?
I'd like to ask a question of our legal counsel. What's the exact wording of the notification requirements as established at this point in time? I mean, where does it, does it say exactly where? Because I know that I can go to the courthouse, and I know how to use the records, and I can find with reasonable certainty the current landowner of any property over the clerk of court's office. And while I rightfully recognize that tax rolls are always behind, I was, I'm curious as to know exactly how this notification criteria is written. I'm concerned that, you know, are we?
If you'll give me a minute, I'll have the code pulled up. You might wanna have a public hearing, then I'll.
Okay, that'd be fine.
It's fine, okay. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and we'll open up the public comment period, and let, then we'll go ahead and take up all these other issues. All right, gentlemen, if y'all would have a seat, we'll open up the public comment period. There is anyone here wishing to address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get three minutes to speak. Right, right here, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Quentin Stelly, and I'm the prideful owner of Lot Twenty, which is on the corner of proposed development. I've been there since October of two thousand and nine. I'm the eighth house in the subdivision, and there's three more lots that are there before me that are along the adjacent property lot lines. And I know for a fact that they did not get it. I knocked on their doors yesterday. And if I was a developer, and I was investing my money, I personally would've rode down to the development, looked at each and every house, seen who had boats in behind them, who personalized everything, as y'all said, and seen who was living there, and knocked on each door, and notified them. That's me personally. Like y'all said, there's fifteen adjacent properties, two people got it, myself and the guy that lives on the other side of the proposed. So there is still twelve lots in East Creek Villas that has not been notified, notified, that people live in ten of them, two are being developed right now. That's my main concern, and I know you could get records. I think that the parish should have actually went out and looked and said, hey, these people living here, send them a note as well. That's my biggest concern right now, and I think that y'all will go ahead and postpone this meeting. But not only am I asking y'all to give notification to all the adjacent lot owners, I want y'all to give notification to everyone, all sixty-four lots in East Creek Villas, because they are proposing minimum thousand square foot houses with the, they could actually deviate off that by reducing it ten percent. And they're lots of forty-foot wide. Right now, we have standards. We're at fifty-foot at the minimum, and our minimum living square foot is thirteen hundred. They are calling themselves totally opposite of us, but calling it phase three. They should be to our requirements, not their own. We want our property values to be the same, stay the same, and not go down. So I'm asking tonight, y'all postpone, y'all send out letters to all the adjacent lot owners, as well as everyone living in my subdivision, because they will have to use our roads to get to their subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could, could I ask the last speaker a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Stelly, is it?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it your testimony then, sir, that you've been there since two thousand and nine?
October of two thousand and nine, yes.
And you said in, in Lot Twenty, which abuts lots
The corner.
five and six of this development?
Yes, sir.
Is it further your testimony that you said that three or four other property owners were there even before you, which would mean before two thousand and nine?
There was three in the corner, opposite of me, in the curve, button up.
If your testimony is absolutely accurate, and I have no reason to suspect it's not, would you, are you saying then that the seven-month tax record
Should be.
hypothesis may not be correct?
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, roll up.
Good evening, Chairman. David Sam Perry. I'm representing several individuals, some of which couldn't be here, vacation, gentleman have surgery. I'm in the very first lot, Lot Thirty-six. It's the main entrance to East Creek Villa subdivision. As Mr. Quentin said, I do agree with him as well, although I do not fall within the adjacent lots. My biggest concern was item two, three, and four he addressed, minimum square footage. I'd like to add to amend that they keep the same lifestyle of homes, if they're gonna add to our subdivision. They also mentioned a gate. I don't know if that's still a question, but we need to address that as well. If they are gonna put a gate and subdivide, I'm thirty-five years old, I've been in Ascension five years, come from East Banish Parish, I've never seen a subdivision inside of a subdivision, one gated and one non-gated. If they do decide to gate, let's accommodate both front entrances as gates. That's my issues as well. The minimum square footage, let's keep it equal. I feel the same, same way as, as most residents. Lot Thirty-five, Lot Sixty, Lot Thirteen, Lot Forty-four, Lot Number One. Keep the same style homes, same conditions, same requirements. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Afternoon. My name's John Bruce Lloyd. I own the adjacent property just south of the proposed East Creek Shadow subdivision. Not against the development of the subdivision, I do have serious concerns. I am concerned with, number one, the drainage at the rear of the property is a problem. The current topographic provides for sheet flow onto our property from the proposed subdivision site, then ultimately on into Black Bayou. The staff comment reflects a detention pond. We are concerned as to whether that is sufficient. My second concern is, with a high density of five houses per acre on small forty-foot lots, we are concerned about the neighbors utilizing my property, four-acre residence, as a playground or parking lot. We, I would prefer that the street ran along the north boundary of the proposed subdivision, with the houses' backyards adjoining my property. We request six-foot wooden fence, the length of the property as a safety measure, and keep our property value from diminishing as a result of high-density construction. As y'all spoke earlier, while we understand that the parish requirements only provide for the notification of adjacent owners, we wonder if the homeowners association of East Creek Villa was advised of the proposed new subdivision. We feel this will certainly impact their subdivision. We are requesting these considerations because our land is, my land is our retirement, mine and my wife's retirement. We own commercial land situated in a commercial corridor, in fear that the small houses will only detract from our potential commercial value. We know that the developer has built a quality product in the past. However, once this density is approved, the parish has no control over what happens in this proposed subdivision. A fact proven in the developer's control of the restrictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Brett Colligan. I live in Lot Eight in East Creek. I'd like to take a state as well. We, we tabled this matter until they notify us, give us what they, give us what they exactly intend to do with that subdivision as far as dimensions. They should be forced to follow our same exact dimensions of the house to maintain our property values.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all it's signed, it was four people, Ricky? Thank you, all right. There's no one else to speak, then the public comment period on this item is closed. Ms. M- Ms. Amanda, did you have the opportunity to find what you were looking for?
Yes, I did. Section 17-405 of the subdivision code says, "The subdivider must submit in electronic format a copy of the list indicating the names of adjacent property owners, addresses, and lot and square numbers as shown in the parish assessor's records." Goes on to say, "Notice of the time and place of the public hearing shall be mailed by certified mail to the owner or subdivider and all adjacent property owners by the planning commission staff. The public hearing shall also be advertised in the official journal."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we not require them to post a sign on the property as well? No?
Mr. Dumas, in future, please be recognized. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadler.
Just one final comment. We've now heard that the code uses the language of adjacent property owners. I think it's also important to note for the record that the form being used by staff, Ascension Parish Office of Zoning Commission, uses the term adjacent property owners form.
Gentlemen, y'all want to step back up? You have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Well, after hearing about some of them not getting letters, I don't have a problem postponing this for 30 days so that we can go through the subdivision. We'll write addresses down, drop letters off to each of the individuals that are adjacent to this property. And when, in that 30 days, I'll talk to my partner and, you know, we'll relook at our minimum square footage and see what we can do to, you know, try to work with some of these homeowners.
Okay. All right, Ms. Amanda?
Yeah.
That does satisfy the law. He is, he has acknowledged that he is willing to-
Yes, I just want to make sure that 30 days will make it to the next meeting. Would you just agree to postpone it until the next planning commission meeting?
Yes.
Our next regularly scheduled meeting. So if we're good on that, then if that's the case, then I'll entertain a motion to postpone this.
Motion.
At the request, I'm just suggesting, make a motion at the request of the applicant.
Okay, I have a motion to postpone till the next regularly scheduled meeting by the, at the request of the applicant by Howard Dalton, seconded by Milton Cluwatt.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman? We got in trouble, and I just said it three times, we got in trouble before on this 60-day stuff. And if I'm not mistaken, the one that agreed to this, it came back and haunt us. So you're fully aware that you've given us, this commission, 30 more days to the next meeting to act on this? And you're going to take necessary, necessary action to address the citizens? But the 30 days, you are giving us that 30 days. Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Cluwatt?
Yes.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Estnarr?
Yes.
Motion passes. Gentlemen, we'll see you at our next month's meeting.
All right, thanks.
All right, Item 10, public hearing to approve or deny the following final development plan for the following planned unit development, bullion crossing phases 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cluwatt?
I'm going to excuse myself on this item.
All right. Mr. Murphy, you want to come up and?
Mr. Bareriger, you're not playing with your telephone, are you?
Yes, I am, sir.
Would you mind, please, turn it off, sir? Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Mr. Murphy?
My name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering and Surveying. We have before you tonight, asking for approval for the final development plan for bullion crossing located near, on Airline Highway, behind, off of Airline Highway, near Highway 42. We've addressed all comments by the staff and we ask for your approval tonight, answering any questions you have.
Comments or questions from commissioners at this time? There's no comments or questions from the commission? Is there anyone, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission? Come on up, sign in with the secretary and you'll get three minutes to speak.
My name is Billy Orsmo and I really just have a question for developers. Are you guys going to be talking about the J-turn concept with this approval tonight?
Mr. Orsmo, if you would, please address your, your questions to the, to the commission and then they'll give the, they'll come and they'll rebut it. They'll answer it during the vote, sir.
No problem. The residents on Swamp Road are very, very concerned with the J-turn concept that seems to have surfaced as part of the school combination with the development. And I just have a question, is that going to be on the agenda for approval when you give a yea or a nay to the development tonight? Yes or no? Is the J-turn concept of getting in and out and maneuvering because it impacts everybody that lives on Swamp Road very dramatically?
Mr. Chair?
I haven't, I don't know of any commissioners that's seen the J-turn concept from Airline Highway.
Can I get an answer? If the developers say no, then I'm fine.
Well, if you, we'll be happy to give you an answer if you give us a chance to talk to staff a little bit about it also and find out. Because like I said, we, we're kind of, you're kind of blindsiding us right now with this. So you just give us, be patient with us and give us a chance.
I'll give you whatever time.
Mr. Dumas, you had a question, I think?
I was just going to say, I believe that the issue of the J's out on Airline Highway and what DOTD is requiring and how they're configuring things on Airline Highway, I don't think it's got anything to do with us and it's not part of our purview.
Well, I, the thing is, I was kind of looking toward our staff and I, I saw some eyes kind of light up just a little bit. So if staff has any comments they want to make about this, this is the time, I want to give them the opportunity to make that. If y'all know anything about the-
I don't know.
I assume that was part of the traffic impact analysis or the-
The original traffic impact analysis came on this development, there was a connection to Swamp Road. That, the cabotage was put on that connection, which forced the developer to route all traffic out to Airline Highway. At that time, staff coordinated with DOTD to say, hey, here's a development that's going to impact your road and, and we would like your input on this. DOTD has been working with the developer to accommodate the proposed impacts to their roadway. We've heard talk that there's an agreement. I've seen some correspondence referencing the J-turn intersections. I haven't seen anything on that. But, you know, as Commissioner Dumas pointed out, it's, it's the state road, it's DOTD's road, and it's not the purview of the parish. All right. But here's the concern, so you guys know exactly why I'm here tonight. J-turns means that everybody coming off of Swamp Road can only turn right. You cannot cross the Airline and you cannot go left. So if I want to go get a Domino pizza, which is right across the intersection of Airline and Swamp Road, I've got to go to my right, cross probably 42 light, and go a further distance to the J-turn, come right around and catch 42 light again. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to live the rest of my life making that kind of inconvenient turn coming out of a road that I've been doing. I fought eight years to get that light there. Eight years I fought to get that light to save my life and other people's lives. I'm not going to sit back and let a J-turn inconvenience everybody because I'm telling you, I know of no one on Swamp Road who will be in love with that, that option. And we will fight it and I will lead the fight. So if it's not going to be part of the discussion tonight, if it's out of your purview, then that's fine. We'll just deal with it as a separate issue. I'm not against the development. I was, but it's done deal. I'm not going to sit here and fight that. I was against the school being put there. It's a done deal, I'm not going to fight that. But I will fight the J-turn. That's a huge inconvenience. There will be no, no turn towards Gonzales coming off of 42 with the J-turn concept. Everybody's got to go to Swamp Road and J-turn at Swamp Road to get the Gonzales. Do you know what that does to us? There are over 1,000 houses probably on that road. Just imagine what you're doing. Not you, per se, but the state. So DOTD is on notice right now. We will fight that and we will begin the fight as quickly as we can. So that's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions to me, I'm happy to answer that. Otherwise, you guys do what you got to do with that development. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orsmo. There's no other speakers on this item. The public comment period is, is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners? Mr. Estnarr?
Yeah. Derek, isn't there some talk about the elimination of these J-turns when 42 is breed done?
I'm going to let Mr. Lambert answer the traffic questions.
Okay.
From AB&amp;B.
Yes, sir. DOTD has plans to widen LA 42 and the J-turns actually started with that project. They had a public comment period. It's been advertised on their website. And when the, when we went through the traffic impact policy that Mr. Dwight Fox described earlier, they added the J-turns to Airline Highway to that project. And so this is DOTD's idea for what they want to see that corridor look like, not only Airline but LA 42 all the way to the bridge. So that, that's their concept and that's what they're moving forward with.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, under plat comments, Item Number 23, it says that track PS1, well, the question was, what is the purpose of this track PS1? In the response from staff, this lot will be used for sanitary sewer lift if needed. What exactly does if needed mean? For example, who is going to make that determination if it's needed or not and what definition will actually be used to make that determination?
During the design of the sanitary sewer, depending on the actual design and depth and so forth, in, in the original plans, they had a, had a pump station in there, a lift station. So we put that in there just in case during, during the construction process, the design dictates it.
The in case part, I guess, is troublesome to me, Mr. Murphy, because I, again, I don't, it's sort of like, is it going to happen or not? And you just don't know when you're trying to prove something or not. But, but thank you for your, your response.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrow?
Like to make a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, this has been happening all night and I would have made motions on other things earlier because we seem to be cutting discussion off just a little bit prematurely, with all due respect, Mr. Barrow. And I think maybe a better way of doing this would just be say, okay, those comments are over and now we'll entertain a motion. It might help all of us. Thank you.
Because actually, I, I have a question that I'd like to ask, but I'm, I want to let the rest of you get your questions in before I, I ask mine. My question is in reference to Item 8, Comment 8, emergency access lane gate. Specify when, who will have access to the emergency lane and gate? How will these parties access the gate in the case of an emergency? The response is, per the applicant, the principal and the facility manager will have a key to the gate. In addition, the police and fire will have a key. These parties will determine the need for entry. Now, I'm assuming that, you know, you're saying the principal and the facility manager, the facility being the school?
Correct.
All right. Do you have any, I saw no documentation in here to substantiate that. So, no offense, Derek, but, you know, it's, it's easy enough to say that, but that doesn't tell me that they're really assuming responsibility for this, you know, and-
Well, I talked to Chad Lynch from the school board and what, what he was saying as a policy, that the principal and the facility manager has keys to the gates and they would have a key in this case and determine the emergency for the, for the school that's there.
Is it possible you can give us something like, you know, something of that nature in writing stating that for the, for our records? Because that's been one of my biggest concerns. Who's going to make that determination and who's going to actually be responsible for that gate? You know, we have an emergency situation and the emergency's over and guess what? Somebody forgets to close and lock the gate. What happens then? Now, and I, I understand you're going to have, of course, emergency services need to have access in, if needs be, but it would, it would be helpful to us if we had something in writing to back that up.
Okay. I can provide it, talk to school board and provide it to get to staff.
Okay. So that's, Mr. Estnarr?
Yes. In this, it says, per the applicant, the principal and facility manager will have keys. What is going to determine the principal and facility manager's use of the keys for access through that gate? It doesn't say for emergency purposes. In other words, why, what, under what conditions will they utilize that gate?
Well, I'm not a member of the school board and the principal, but I'm, I mean, the purpose of the gate is for emergency ingress and ingress.
Yeah, as long as it's, it's not really spelt out like that. And I'd like to see that addressed as such, that the principal and the facility manager will use, will have keys to the gate for emergency access.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Mr. Dalton?
This was one of my original concerns when this thing came up with an access on Swamp Road. We can call it, it can be called an emergency access. Once this thing is in, there's no way to enforce how it's used. There's no way to enforce keeping the gate closed. In my heart of hearts, I know that it's going to be used for routine traffic and I know what it's going to do to Swamp Road. I've spent a lot of time trying to figure out a way to address those concerns and I just don't know of any way that we can. I hear the other commissioners' concerns and I think they're on the same page as I. I think we all know what's going to happen. I don't see any way to address it. We're actually at the mercy of the school board, the people that have those keys to enforce the use, you know, as an emergency access point and not a routine access point. Just, I don't see, I don't see any way around this. I think it's just, we're, we have no recourse, is what I'm trying to say.
And I would tend to agree. It's an even bigger concern, we keep talking about keys in plural. How many keys are there going to be? You know, is, well, even so, you-
How many cards are going to be?
How many cards? So, and I'm like, I don't know how or if we can address it. A lot of this is going to be based on good faith, but, and that's, and I, that's what I felt about the best way was to, I'd like to at least see something in writing from the school board, giving us some idea, some indication of, so at least we have some, some basic idea. Because I don't, I don't think that Mr. Murphy or Mr. Bareriger or the developer himself is, can act as agent for the school board and can actually speak for them. So you've got to get with those individuals and you've got to, to get, you know, get something from, from the school board itself.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to the developer submitting a correspondence from the school board outlining a commitment on their part that they will use the, the entrance or manage the gate, manage the gate pass contemplated for emergency ingress and ingress.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas to approve contingent upon the proceeding of the documentation explaining the maintenance and usage of the emergency access.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Howard Dalton. Discussion?
No discussion, Mr. Chairman. If there is no discussion, I'd like to offer an amendment.
All right, what is your amendment?
That we also address my concern on the item-
That we also address my concern on item number 23 under the plat comments, where I spoke about the terminology of "if needed." I would like to see the "what if needed" more clearly defined in terms of who is gonna make that determination of what's, you know, what "if needed or not" means and what definition will be used to make that determination.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
That's a good question.
Talk about that.
You accept that amendment?
Yeah, just before I do, can I ask a question? I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Have you completed the construction drawings?
Yes, sir.
You have not?
That's what I was gonna say, Mr. Dumas. In the construction drawing phase, it'll be determined. Until we have a final development plan, it's not economically feasible to start a set of construction plans. If we don't know what we're constructing, we can't do it. That's when the point of clarification on item 23 will come in, whether we actually need it or not.
Well, but let me ask a question. I think to the commissioner's comment is, you know, I guess I just gotta ask a question. Why does a lift station have to be in a lot of its own? Why can't it be in a utility servitude that's created in the final plat in Lot C5? Why does it have to be in a separate lot? And I think that would address that, that his concern.
Well, a lot of times, these lift stations are... They're maintained by a certain entity other than the developer. And in cases, depending on the size of the lift station and size of the electrical components that go along with that, a lot of times it needs to be fenced in, in its own lot, in order to protect it from individuals and...
But you could fence in a utility servitude as well.
Right. Right.
I think the commissioner brings up a good point. When you're creating a lot of land versus a utility servitude, you know...
Well, we can put it... We can not put it, and if we need a wet well, we can just put it in a servitude. That wouldn't be an issue.
Commissioners? If I amend the condition, take your condition and say that that particular lot has to be removed, and if a utility servitude is required, they can show it on the file plat?
A, you're welcome to amend an amended motion, Mr. Dumas. And B, I would accept that amendment to my amendment.
Okay. How about if I restate the motion one more time?
Just don't ask me to restate it. I think maybe the chairman has been keeping copious notes.
I make a motion to approve with two conditions. Condition number one, that you deliver to the parish appropriate documentation from the school board acknowledging the responsibility to manage that servitude of egress and egress as an emergency one. And number two, that you eliminate parcel PS1, and if you need a lift station, put it in a utility servitude in the final plat.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve with two conditions pertaining to the documentation of the responsibility on the part of the school board for the emergency entrance. And item two, the elimination of Lot PS2, if there's a need for the lift... Okay. Okay. And if with the elimination... If there's a need for the lift station, that it be provided as a utility servitude.
I'll second.
Julio Dumas, seconded by Howard Dalton. Is there any discussion? This time, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Oh, I should... You have to abstain.
Mr. Sadley?
Yes.
Mr. Estenard?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 11, public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council for the following private road to be accepted into the maintenance system, the Bluffs Avenue.
I'm Diane Martin. I'm president of the Bluffs of Ascension Homeowners Association. I have our other two officers and board members with me today, Prentice Parker and Ron Bro. We're a subdivision of 44 homes, all on one street, the Bluffs Avenue. We're a small subdivision with big problems and are asking the parish for help. The first filing, consisting of lots 1 through 28, was commenced in 2000. The builder chose to zone the street as private, but then never gated the single entrance. Each homeowner owns that part of the street between side property lines to the halfway point. I have the original plat here that shows the private zoning. When the second filing, lots 29 to 44, was started, our builder did not sign nor record the restrictions for the second filing. Therefore, the homeowners in our second filing do not have to abide by the restrictions nor pay dues unless they have signed a covenant to be under our restrictions. Only five of the 16 homeowners in the second filing have signed this covenant. Every year, we have at least four association members who do not pay their dues, forcing us to put liens on their property and an additional expense to the association, both in filing fees and in not collecting their dues. When we formed our homeowners association in 2006, we decided that the primary responsibility was maintenance of our street. We have now been in existence for five years, and our treasury contains about $14,000. Not nearly enough to make major repairs to our street. Both representatives of planning and zoning and the contractor we chose have surveyed the street, found two areas that need to be saw cut and the asphalt replaced. And we understand that these repairs will bring our street up to parish code. The price to fix these two areas is $5,875, which we have. I have the estimate from the contractor, and I have today, a letter from our bank showing our balance. We would respectfully request, as taxpayers and citizens of Ascension, that the parish consider taking over our street. We're asking for your contingent approval. We will then have the repairs done to the street and... Bring this before the council. We truly want our subdivision to remain a nice place to live and to keep our property values up. If the road should need major repairs, the homeowners association cannot afford to fix it. I know we cannot get our residency to put up several thousand dollars, and we still have the problem of 11 homes in the second filing who are not under the restrictions and do not have to pay dues. Our councilman, George Valentine, has been with us this whole time, knows our problems, and is here tonight. On behalf of the residents of the Bluffs of Ascension, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments or questions from commissioners? No, I've got a couple.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification. I happened to look at the... Seeing as this was a... When this subdivision was approved as a gated community, the commission gets the opportunity to review the subdivision restrictions. So I know that there were two sets.
Right.
Now, did you say that the second set for the second filing was never recorded?
The... What I understand is, I talked to the lawyer that prepared them, his assistant, and the builder wasn't happy with the lawyer and refused to sign them, and so they were never recorded.
Okay. Well, you might want to go to the clerk of court's office, because the phone call I made, I got a... Information I got says that several lots in the second filing... These amendments, these restrictions have been amended specifically to several lots in the second filing.
With the covenant?
Uh-huh.
Right. We prepared that covenant.
That's for the second filing, not the first?
No, the first filing is under the restrictions.
But this is... Wait, the number that he gave me was for the second filing. So you might want to double-check that. But the question that I have is, the commission really has no jurisdiction over your subdivision restrictions. However, in the first set, there's an entire article devoted to the private servitude of passage. And it's also, of course, it's talked about in the second set. So I have to defer to our legal counsel. If we go ahead and we recommend approval of this street for acceptance into the parish maintenance system, are these restrictions gonna have to be amended to show that this is now a public road? If it's not, then the homeowners association can still act accordingly, according to their restrictions with a public road?
That's a very good question. I think the homeowners association, we'd have to have some sort of official act wherein the association dedicates the road and that be brought before the council.
Okay. So in other words, we would have to see a formal resolution requesting... A request from the homeowners association.
I would think so.
Which I'm kind of surprised we didn't see that here. I think that would have been appropriate for us to see that, since there is a functioning homeowners association. I guess I'd be corrected in saying that these restrictions would have to be amended to... Since they are referring to a private servitude, they'd have to be amended to show a change there? It's no longer a private servitude?
There's a possibility they'd have to be amended.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dumas?
I just want to get some clarity here, because he brought up something. First filing, the restrictions were recorded.
Yes.
All of those members are active in some way, whether they pay or not, but they're there.
They're there.
Second filing, you're in agreement, it wasn't recorded, but some of the homeowners, through a separate covenant, have agreed to be part of the...
Correct.
And those are the numbers that are part of the second.
Correct.
There are still other property owners that are not part of the homeowners association.
11.
11. And they depend on the access from this private servitude of passage.
Correct.
And you are here on behalf of the homeowners association, which is the 44 minus... The 11 are not here.
Correct. But they've all been advised of what we're attempting to do. We send out letters, we have meetings. I mean, they choose to ignore it or not.
Okay. All right. So that leads me to the question for legal counsel. Commissioner Marshon brings up a good point. I mean, these things may have to come from the homeowners association as the official applicant, but what about the 11 other individuals that are technically not a part of the HOA, but yet depend on the road, which is only in part subject to the HOA?
Right. I was under the impression, based on the plat, that we were only accepting a certain portion of the road. Are we... Is it now... Is it the entire? The entire road?
What we're looking at, what's here is stated as 2,075 feet.
Yeah, it's the whole road.
So it's the whole road to the T-turnaround.
Correct. So...
Well, even if they own the road bed, the parish could still maintain the road bed for public use. I mean, I don't think we're precluded from doing that. Whether or not it's prudent is really up to you and ultimately to the council.
Well, yeah, but we're talking about... Well, I see your point. If it's simple versus just simply maintaining it.
Right.
And I guess the other question I have to... I mean, to me, this is... I've got way too many questions.
Well, there are public roads that the property owners own to the center line or own all the way across the road bed, and the parish simply maintains.
Because they maintain simply a servitude rather than ownership.
Right. They maintain... Because the public uses the road and utilizes the road, that justifies public maintenance of the road.
Well, then, in that case, maybe the best advice we can give this applicant is that instead of them applying for the parish to take ownership of the road, that they need to be very specific about the request to say, "We want to grant the parish a servitude over the road," so you assume responsibility over it. Because if they continue to own it, I think, if they continue to own it, then it eliminates all my other questions about how many non-conformities are we creating? Minimum lot size and what have you? If all of a sudden, they gave up that real estate.
I think it's very common that landowners continue to own the road, you know, the property upon which the road sits, and the parish simply maintains. And that probably is the simplest way to resolve this issue.
In which case, if it could very well be that the parish could take action on a request for servitude and assume maintenance of the road without accepting ownership, in which case, then these 11 non-responsive members could simply be notified of the action rather than having...
I don't know that they would have to be notified. If the public uses that section, that stretch of road, if the council were just to accept it into the maintenance system, I don't think anyone would complain.
Mr. Compton?
This is clearly a unique situation. Do the property owners intend on dedicating the property that's within the road to the parish? All 44? Give up ownership of that piece of the property?
Well, if we could get all 44 people to give an opinion, I would hope so.
Because it would be...
It's difficult, because a lot of apathy... I don't know how to explain it. It's just, I can't get, you know, more than seven people to come to a meeting, so...
I don't want to speak for Ben here, but the parish shouldn't be in the business of maintaining over a servitude. We should take ownership of that road, and that should be our road. We don't want to have a servitude over somebody else's property. If we have the choice, which this clearly is, us making a choice to take over a private road, we need to take over ownership as well.
Mr. Chairman? I don't disagree with you. I was trying to find a solution to this. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Clouat?
I have to agree with Mr. Compton. Would y'all say, try to go back and do door-to-door? I say you sent them...
Absolutely.
You sent them... I mean, I know you're taxpayers, and you want your road in your system and everything, but I think legally, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm like, I have to agree with Mr. Compton that the road should be owned by the parish from end to end.
Right.
And everybody on that road, well, they really, truly own a piece of it. So if it's private, if it was dedicated private when it was built, I'm like Mr. Compton, we need to go ahead and get that situated. So I think the best time, right, the best thing for y'all to do right now would be to let us go ahead and defer this or table it. I mean, not table, but defer it or postpone it. And I know it's hard, but go back to all the people and get a signed document saying that everybody donates that road, that land or that road, to the parish. And Ricky, do you see... Mr. Dumas brought up a good point. Do you see any problems with, once it's dedicated to the parish, with lots, frontage and stuff? Or would it be grandfathered in as an existing?
To me, that's a non-issue. It's the issue of the maintenance of the road.
Okay.
You know, we're not... We don't do it if the state widens a road or if the parish widens a road. We don't go back and look.
Right.
I mean, it just is what it is.
Thank you. So I think right now, it'd be for y'all to go back, maybe regroup, and get everybody to sign it. Sign a document.
Sign.
Get with your lawyer and sign a document saying that y'all are gonna donate the road to the parish, and whatever else y'all say y'all gonna do in the applicant's, in your application. And I think you'd have no problem after that.
Like what kind of... What, just the...
I think...
Near by dedication? Are we gonna need it formal by...
I would suggest you getting together with Mr. Compton and Ms. Amanda. That's legal. Now, I don't know, Mr. Marshon or chairman might have some input to it, which I'd like to hear.
Well, what I was gonna suggest was make it a formal request from the homeowners association and get each member to sign. Just, it would be a petition.
Okay. Just a petition, you think?
Well, that's what a petition is. It's a request.
Right.
So it would represent, it would show representation on the part of each individual homeowner in the development. Also, I think you... I would seriously urge you to check into your... The two sets of home subdivision restrictions.
You found that the restrictions, like the first filing...
I called the clerk of court's office and asked some questions, and what I was told was both sets were recorded. Now...
We had... Okay.
All right. So, I mean, but that's something that you need to look into, and if as far as amending and so forth and take that.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe the best thing to do is for you to go ahead and request that this be deferred or postponed until our next regularly scheduled meeting. And then that gives you time to go ahead and do this and come back with a more complete proposal to us.
What if we have a couple of houses that are vacant under foreclosure? What would you do? What would we do with something like that?
Mr. Dumas?
You know, let me make a suggestion to you. I think that you've got a number of legal questions here, and some of them may be easy to answer, some of them may be more difficult to answer. For example, finding, you know, these documents of what is recorded, what's not recorded, you know, a legal counsel could probably get to the bottom of that rather quickly. It may very well be that your declarations permit you to hold an election, and the majority would rule, in which case, with that election, you can come to the commission and move forward. And then you've got, as you just indicated, properties that are under foreclosure, and you need to seek legal advice on how to address them. My suggestion is, you know, get your legal counsel that can look at these things for you and get you prepared, because it might be... for you and get you prepared, because it might, it may be, it may be easier, it may be much more complicated, we don't know that.
We have been dealing with this since, like, eight years, so we have had advice of a lawyer, and we... It's just a nightmare. I appreciate your time, and I guess we'll try and get a petition from all the homeowners, see what we can do. It's just, you know, as I said, it's a bad situation.
Okay.
Brought on by our builder.
So at this time, would you like to request a postponement till our next regularly scheduled meeting?
That'll be fine.
Okay.
I make a motion that at the petitioner's request, that we defer this matter for thirty days.
And I second that motion.
I have a motion to, by Julio Dumas, to postpone this item for thirty days or our next regularly scheduled meeting. It was requested by the petitioner, seconded by Julio Dumas. Discussion. No discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Estnard? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we have item twelve, public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council for the following ordinances, twelve A, signed requirements for subdivision public notices.
Mr. Clouat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subdivision ordinance committee was submitting three things at this time, but I would like for you to possibly address a little problem that we have in relation to attendance.
Mr. Clouat, can we bring that up during your subcommittee report?
Yes, sir. Be happy to.
Right now, we'd like to, I need to go ahead and get along with this agenda item.
Be happy to, be happy to, Mr. Chairman. First one is a signed requirement for subdivision public notice. We've been getting a lot of complaints from the public that when a piece of land is developed, they cannot identify it. So the subdivision committee came up with a ordinance with regulations and a sign, and I'd like to ask permission to send this to the full council at this time. And if there's any questions from other commissioners, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Chairman. This looks good, but I have a question about item number three. It says the sign must be four foot by six foot in size. That's definitive statement of size. And I would suggest that with the minimum size of letters as specified further on in item five, items A through D, that you run into a potential problem if someone's got a big name for a subdivision where there's a lot of letters. And I would like to suggest that possibly the item three be reworded to say, the sign must be of a minimum size, you know, not less than six foot by four foot, just in case somebody's got some exorbitant name of a subdivision, so you have enough room for all the letters.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sadler?
I would agree with the last speaker's comment, and maybe only add if Mr. Clouat is amenable. It doesn't specify which direction a six or four goes. Now, I fully realize when you look at the example sign on the next page, a six feet, looks like it's intended to be width, and the four feet height. Might be a little bit better, though, maybe just specify after each of the dimensions given under step number three. The sign must be six feet, maybe in parentheses, width by four feet, height, or something of that nature. But, you know, I'd just also like to say that going around looking at property sometimes can be a real pain, and I'd love to see this, besides the zoning signs, it sure would be helpful, and so I commend Mr. Clouat and his commission for working diligently on this.
Mr. Clouat?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem, I think that's a good idea. I'm going to go out on a limb a little bit and answer for the subdivision ordinance committee, and I don't think we'd have any problem, as long as the other commissioners on this board have no problem with it. I have no problem with adding minimum, and then W and H.
Mr. Dumas?
I just, you know, one comment, I think this is awesome, I mean, this is great. But the only thing I'm going to suggest is that item number two, I think we need to be a little bit more specific, and if I may suggest that, that each, I think there should be a sign posted, at least one posted on the side where it fronts any road, whether it's, so if it's a corner piece, then it should be two signs, one fronting on one road and one fronting on the other. And then I think the other requirement should be that, you know, some of these parcels of land may be very long in nature, and I think that, you know, properties, let's say, that are in excess of eight, nine hundred feet wide should have, you know, let's say two signs, so they, like one sign for every four hundred feet of frontage, or something to that effect. I mean, because a parcel land gets so big that at the end of the day, you know, you may, you may miss it. And I think if you require a sign every, every so many feet...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Compton, would you say it louder so I can hear the comment?
You need to set a maximum number of signs, because a property like MP Evans would have, you know, a hundred signs for every four hundred feet of frontage.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Clouat?
That was the main thing when we, when I started looking at this, and what I did, I went around and looking at large pieces of property and noticing the for sale, the huge real estate for sale signs on it, and most of them were just with one sign, and they were pretty much the six by four signs. So I do agree with Mr. Dumas that it should, we should say something here, it should face the main road or the road, and that, but I think one sign would be sufficient on a piece of property, because the real estate, they want to sell it, and they only put one sign, one big sign on it. That's only my comment, is that I researched it, and I feel like one sign is good enough. When we do a project for building, like, even like if you notice the women's hospital, they just have one big sign out in the front, and it's pretty much that size. So I see no need for a whole bunch of signs.
At, Mr. Dumas, this might kind of go along with something that you were, you know, what you were talking about. At one time, I had suggested that perhaps the number of signs should be based on the number of entrances to the development. So...
For the proposed development.
For the proposed development. So, but, I mean, that's what this discussion is for, to determine, determine these items.
Is the next step to, is the next step to put this into an ordinance and us review it before it goes to the council, or to send it assets to the council?
If I'm not mistaken, this, this language would be placed into ordinance form and sent directly to the council, is that correct, Ms. Manda?
So any amendments you make tonight, I will, I will make to the document and put it in ordinance form, and I'll go straight to the council.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have one. Ms. Manda, you would make the changes as what this...
Yeah, I've got the document up now as y'all are discussing it.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Now, the comments or questions from commissioners then. This time, we'll go ahead and open up...
I got a question.
You're not a commissioner.
I got a question. But I just want to clarify on item D, five D, sorry. Is this for the first time a project comes for a preliminary plat? That that's the only time we're going to require the sign to be posted and dated? Is the first time a project comes for preliminary plat, like, we're not going to require the developer to revise his sign if he gets postponed for thirty days? We're not going to require him to repost for his final plat? It's for the first time it comes for a preliminary plat?
Mr. Clouat?
I'm going to ask my fellow commissioner on the subdivision, what is, what is your thoughts about that, Mr. Dumas?
I would suggest that, yeah, it'd be just the first time. I mean, if not, this sign's going to be, one, expensive, and it's going to be...
I think so, too. What do you feel like, Mr. Compton?
I feel the same sort of thing, is we're doing our due diligence to make the public know that this is what's happening on this piece of property on this date, and it's up to the public to track it at that point. I mean, it is what it is. The second question?
Yeah. You just said you had one.
I have questions. Is this for all development that comes before the commission?
And I think I know where you're going with this. In other words, is this for all major developments, our minor developments, minor developments including family partitions, simple divisions, or what? Specifically, what is this sign going to be required for?
I would think this was intended for major subdivisions, but I can't, truly can't answer that without going before the committee. Mr. Dumas, would you comment?
I think, I think you wouldn't, you wouldn't post this on any, on any preliminary plat approval for a subdivision, and I think that any, anything that's... You would exclude minor and family partitions, but, but the sign also would apply to rezonings or anything like that.
Well, right now, this is in the subdivision rig, so it's not for rezonings.
Okay.
But we already have the zoning...
A minor subdivision would have a preliminary plat. A family partition is exempted from the preliminary plat procedure, so I think that if we're going to state it's for a preliminary plat, that will include the minors and majors. I wanted clarification that...
Refresh my mind on a, on a size lots for minor.
Minor is just less than twenty.
Okay, then I, I think that I would suggest that we, we, for, this would apply to any subdivision of twenty or greater, twenty or more lots.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the difference between a minor...
How about everything but family partitions?
No, that eliminates family partitions.
Right.
It's what you said, everything but.
It would catch like a subdivision that came to us tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything but, this would apply to everything but family partition, irregardless of the number of lots.
So you would require somebody to put a sign like this for, for a simple subdivision of five lots?
Yeah. Why not?
Simple divisions that go to Michael on Fridays would require a sign.
Remember, they don't come to us, they just go straight to Michael, right?
Mr. Compton, what would you recommend as...
I think it's anything that requires a preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Sadler?
I'd more support Mr. Estnard's take on this, but for more selfish reasons, I'll put in a record, you know, I'm going to see them all. So I'd like to see a sign, sure would be helpful, not just for the public, it'll be helping the commissioners, is what I'm trying to say, whether it's a small one or a big one, whatever, that yellow sign for the zoning, for example, sure helps. Thank you.
Now, when you say preliminary plat, Ricky, you're talking about, you're just omitting family partitions, right?
And simple divisions.
A simple division is five lots or less, right?
No, a simple division can be up to nine lots.
Well, we need to go ahead and add, better than that, let's just exempt family partitions and add the rest. Ms. Manda, you, you understand what we're saying?
I guess, I guess the question is, a family partition can have just as many lots as a simple division, so what's, where's the discrepancy? I mean, what discriminates one from the other? One's building a road to code and the other one isn't. So let's just, let's just leave it as...
A simple division isn't building a road at all, a simple division is dividing on an existing road.
An existing road, I'm sorry, yeah.
Therefore, there's no preliminary plat, they submit a final plat, we review it, give comments, and then Michael signs them on Friday.
Family partitions would be the only two things you exempt.
I can go along with that, because the intent was to let the people know what big development was coming in their area. Ms. Manda?
Right.
So everything that requires a preliminary plat has to have the sign?
That, Ricky?
Well, no, Rick, no, that would include simple divisions, so you would...
Simple divisions don't need them.
Well, that's why they do a final plat, they just do a final plat, that's correct.
There are other projects that you guys see that don't have preliminary plats, historic site overlay projects, development in business park. There might be one more, but, but what I'm getting at is, if we just limit it to preliminary plats, then you're eliminating the other ones. I wanted clarity, because it was unclear in this, that we wanted it for everything. Do we want it for everything, or do we want to limit it to certain things, or how do we...
I think we'd go better just by eliminating, include everything, but eliminate family partitions and simple divisions, and then let it include everything else at that point.
Yeah, but you're talking about someone putting up a sign like this on an already developed industrial parcel, and all they're going to do is build another, and build another building similar to everything else, and they ought to demonstrate that they meet the landscaping and the parking and a few other requirements. I think there's a lot of other things that you might want to consider eliminating, where the sign may not be required.
List of things, why?
Fire away. Fire away.
Ricky, do you have, I mean, would it be possible for you to develop a list of recommendations of things that you would recommend, have the sign, and things that don't require a sign?
We can do that.
Can you do that between now and next, next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Clouat, would you, would you mind if we defer this and have him prepare a list of his recommendations that we look at him?
I'd appreciate it if he prepared a list.
Mr. Dumas, just a point of clarity, postpone, we're not deferring this.
I'm sorry, postpone, I apologize.
Postpone, postpone this until next month. Next regular meeting, rather.
I'll second that motion.
Was that offered as a motion?
Yes, it was, motion, postpone till next regular meeting.
I have a motion to postpone this, and till our next regularly scheduled meeting by Milton Clouat, seconded by Julio Dumas. Discussion. All right, and we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Estnard? Motion passes. Item, item twelve B, subdivision, sixty-day waiver agreement. Mr. Clouat?
In light of what has been happening with the commission in relation to postponing and deferring of subdivisions that, and other developments that requires a sixty-day waiver, we don't have one in place, and I've asked the legal department to put one in place, and sitting before you is one that Ms. Manda prepared, to where whenever a developer comes, he'll have something here when he comes and he submits it, his development. If he feels like that there's going to be a problem with the sixty-day period, he can sign this agreeing to an extension. Ms. Manda, would you please elaborate a little bit more on this?
It just basically accomplishes what we did tonight in this meeting, the developer affirmatively agrees that he consents to a waiver in the event that his application is incomplete until such time as it is complete, and you all can review it.
It's always better to have it in writing, having that consent in writing.
Although we do have it on video, so that's nice as well, but this is...
But this makes it legal.
I think it makes it, makes a more solid case, yes.
Okay.
Does this need to go to, this doesn't need to go to the parish council, does it?
Because it's a change in the preliminary, preliminary plat process, I'd send it, since we're already going to be introducing several ordinances.
Comments or questions from commissioners? Comments or questions from commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing on this. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in, you'll get your three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak, some public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Commissioner?
Mr. Dumas?
Ms. Manda, so, did I hear you right? So this is going to be part of the application, where somebody would have to waive those rights?
They're not required to, it's an optional form that they can choose to sign or choose not to sign, but at least we know that it's in your packet, yes, they have affirmatively agreed in advance to waive if necessary, or they haven't.
Well, they have the option to sign this at a public hearing, if, during a course of public hearing, evidence comes up.
We can have that form available here, instead of just tonight, as, you know, the developer agreed verbally, we could certainly provide, provide them with the form, if they didn't sign it in their preliminary plat package.
Yeah, I just, you know, hate to entice people to waive rights when they don't have to until...
And that's why it's, it's optional.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's to wish the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sadler?
I move that we recommend to the parish council that the waiver agreement form in our package developed by the subdivision ordinance...
our package developed by the subdivision ordinance committee be, you know, be sent to the parish council for their approval or denial.
I second that motion. I have a motion to recommend approval of the subdivision 60-day waiver agreement to the parish council by Dan Sadler, seconded by Milton Clouat. Discussion. No discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Estnord?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 13, public hearing to approve or deny adding the following to the planning commission policy manual, the perpetual pre-deal servitude agreement policy. Mr. Clouat?
Mr. Chairman, we have been using this form, and we feel like that it's imperative that we go ahead and make this part of our policies in relation to the servitude agreement. And the subdivision's ordinance committee submits this for approval to become part of the policy, this servitude agreement.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sadler?
Just a point of clarity, this is not an ordinance, and the word policy has meaning, because this will be done on a case-by-case basis, I guess, Mr. Clouat, where it's justified, you know, to do so.
Yes, well, you're right, this, but our policy should be written in accordance with our ordinance, so they, they have the support of the ordinances, so. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
You're not a commissioner either, but you're a staff member, so I'll let you go and ask you a question. No, we just found the typo in it and just kinda wanted to get it corrected tonight since we're here. If you look about, right, right down below all the signature lines, and it says the, the second paragraph kind of below all the signatures, it says the prediles right-of-way of ingress and egress. They should actually read, it shouldn't be right-of-way, it should be servitude.
Ms. Manda, will you take care of that?
I'll speak up in half and her and say yes. We'll make sure it gets, it gets corrected.
Would you, Jeff, would you see Ms. Manda about taking care of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
All right, we'll open up the public hearing on this. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get you three minutes to speak. No one wishing to address the commission on this? Public comment period is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's to wish the commission?
I'll move that it goes to the parish council for adoption.
It doesn't. This sticks with us.
Oh, then let's do it. Let's adopt it.
So I can assume that's a motion to adopt this policy, recommended policy?
Yes.
I second that.
I have a motion to adopt this, this policy by Howard Dalton, seconded by Milton Clouat. Discussion.
Well, I just wanna be clear. We're, we're just adopting the form. We're not adopting a policy that says, do something with this form. We're just adopting the form, correct?
Yes, just the form.
I second it. Let's go.
All right, I don't second it. You're late.
All right, so let's go.
All right. We've got a motion to approve by Howard Dalton, seconded by Milton Clouat.
Yes.
That's the discussion vote. And Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Estnord?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 14, our subdivision ordinance committee report. Mr. Clouat?
Yes, sir. Right now, I would like to discuss or have some input on the attendance record for our subcommittee. Last month, we had a meeting, but we didn't have a complete forum, so we had to basically cancel our meeting, and I would like for our chairman and the other commissioners to address this, so that when we do schedule these meetings, that either we notify it ahead of time, or possibly, if you cannot serve on those committees, think about maybe resigning so that we can have someone else appointed. And I mean, I realize that at times that you may not be able to make a meeting, and I can appreciate that, because there's some times I won't be able to make it, but I, I think we have a problem on some of it, and I'd like for it to be addressed by this commission right now.
All right. Yes, during the past few months, we've had a few issues with some attendance on the part of commissioners for our subcommittee meetings, and back in January, when I appointed commissioners to subcommittees, I asked at that time, and I'll ask again, there's any reason that you cannot serve or don't wanna serve on a subcommittee, please submit something to me in writing as to the reasons why. The reason I did that was so we would have, we would know exactly who would be participating on our subcommittees, and we would be able to take care of these issues like that. I got one letter at the time. It was in reference to a scheduling conflict, and we were able to resolve that, but I heard nothing else. So I guess tonight...
Mr. Chairman, I have received some emails and phone calls at, sometimes with some of the other commissioners, but it still, it still is a serious problem that I'd like to get, but I have received several phone calls and emails.
Okay. I realize that there are times when there's gonna be conflicts as far as scheduling, jobs and family and so forth, but in order for this commission to do its work, there's got to be some, some research, some legwork as far as bringing recommendations forth for revisions to ordinances, issues that we see come up, that the commission has to, to deal with, and to try and get some kind of resolution for. But, so I'm, once again, I'm gonna ask the commissioners this evening, if there is some reason that you cannot serve on the subcommittee that you have been assigned to, or you don't wish to serve, please send me, give me something in writing, so we can go ahead and we can, we can get the commissioners that can, that are available and can participate. We can go ahead and we can get those, let those commissioners serve. Is that all for your report, Mr. Clouat?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, we're, we're working on traffic impact study. We're working several sections of the subdivision ordinance section of the LDC, and we are in the process right now of acts, of trying to work on some more, but parts of the subdivision regulations. But again, our attendance record has, has kinda held us back, but I think we're gonna see about getting that resolved, so we should be trying to tackle the remainder of the subdivision regulations to come back, to come before this committee, this commission. Our next meeting is at 5:00, a week from tonight, at DPW, and we sure appreciate everybody attending that can attend. That's it, Chairman.
All right, then we'll go ahead and move along. Item 15, new business. Is there any items of new business that any commissioners wish to bring before the full body? None. All right. Item 16, old business, 16A, Parisian villas.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. In accordance with the staff, we feel that as though we've met all requirements of this subdivision to get our final plat, we ask that you approve.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Clouat?
One, one question I have. Has all the punch list items been completed, and the paperwork turned in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sadler?
I've visited this property Monday, and visual inspection showed that they were constructing fence posts, the majority of which had no rails or boards around the residential perimeter and so forth. Is that included in punch list completions?
No, sir, it is not. That, that come, came at a later date after the construction. I believe it was in the final development plan.
It's in the developer's agreement.
In the developer's agreement to construct that fence, but it was not actually on our construction plans as part of the construction of the subdivision.
Okay, and a follow-up question, if I will, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at a memo dated May 10th from our DPW manager to, to Mr. Murphy, and it makes a comment, says we're still lacking testing lab reports and surveying reports. Two things. By testing lab reports, does that refer to the road or roadbed, and where are these reports? That's a May 10th letter.
As per staff, Mr. Ben Laura, he, he has acknowledged that he's received all reports.
No, it's not in our packet, so that's why I'm asking.
Yes, well, I, I'm not sure about that, Mr. Daniel, but, I mean, it was submitted to the parish, and they agree we've submitted them. I don't know why it's not in your packet.
It's in my packet.
Ben, what?
The second, I mean, the page after that, Ben, memorandum that he was talking about is, says all items from the subdivision checklist given to the contractor engineer developing reconstruction meeting have been satisfactory completed. And that was dated May 18, 2011. That was from Tim Ward, the engineer that reviews the construction for this development.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes. Mr. Rick Compton, is part of the development agreement, part of the total package for the final inspection and the final, the final, I guess is what I'm asking? In other words, if we vote tonight to give a final on here, does it relieve anything in the development agreement? Or, or do they go hand-in-hand? Please explain to me a little bit about that.
All items that were addressed in the developer's agreement that needed to be complete prior to this stage have been completed. The fence wasn't part of this phase. They've started construction on that, which is further down the road.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? All right, I believe we, trying to remember if we opened the public hearing on this last time, but if, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, if there's anyone here that wishes to address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get you three minutes to speak. No one here, so the public comment period on this is closed. Last call, comments or questions from commissioners? What's to wish the commission?
Move to approve.
Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Milton Clouat. Discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Estnord?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Second. Item 17, adjourned, which I have a motion by Commissioner Sadler, seconded by Commissioner Dumas. Any discussion or opposition? We're adjourned. We'll reconvene with the zoning commission in 10 minutes.